I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you wouldn't mind staying, standing, I'd like to take a moment of silence for our shooting victims that we lost this last weekend. Okay, thank you. Okay. Today is Monday, July, this is July the first. Jeez. Today's Monday, August the fifth, two thousand nineteen. The time is five, five oh, six, seven, seven oh five. And the meeting at Greensburg City Council is called to order. At this time, please silence electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four, this is the request that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that is available on the table on the back of the room. Okay. Road call, please.
Maya, Kenji. Here. Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Darren Covington.
Here.
Jamie King.
Here.
And Daryl Horne.
Here.
Okay. Uh, old business, Jeff Messer? Approval minutes, oh, approval minutes, sorry. Everybody got the minutes ahead of time? And... Any corrections? If not, then take a motion to pass.
I'll make a motion to approve the June twelve, I guess I...
July first.
Well, it's June third, let's do them separately.
Okay.
The June third minutes.
Second. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
I'll, I'm staying from now.
Okay, July the first.
I'll make a motion to pass on July first.
Okay, second?
Second.
All, or any question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm staying from now.
All in favor.
Okay. Uh, I'm staying from now. Okay, that's the one I missed. Okay. Now, old business, Victor Tilly. Uh, second and final reading ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen, investment of public funds.
And Jeff was out tonight due to no less so George Victor Tilly is here.
Okay, hi George, how are you?
Hi, I'm Eric, thank you very much. Again, Jeff had a, uh, group council, I'm sure you'd rather be here.
I would rather be here too. Hold it in the mic.
Sure. Uh, I understand you presented last month on, uh, longer-term investments as opposed to the shorter terms. Uh, I should understand, I should also look at, just again, who's your fund type investments? Whereas we'd be looking at longer-term city investments or others. And, uh, you're up to the second reading of the, uh, policy and who's the ordinance? So I've just been here to answer any questions anyone might have.
Is there any questions, guys?
Somebody just bring me up to speed, so we can ask them what we're doing.
Sure.
Go ahead.
We, uh, briefly, we, we worked with city to set up a depository account, custodial account, to hold a portion of the funds that we know will not be needed in the near term. Funds that we can invest out in six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months, uh, to earn a higher interest rate than they're getting. And from the bank or, uh, other short-term.
And there was, I think, a little bit of confusion on this agenda, so there will actually be resolution twenty nineteen dash seven, which is the investment policy. And then one that's twenty nineteen dash sixteen, um, that's the authori- authorizing the investment of public funds. So I think... It looks like twenty nineteen dash sixteen is on the agenda, the resolution twenty nineteen dash seven is not.
What was that resolution for?
Investment policy.
That would be the first reading.
It's only one resolution.
Oh, okay, resolution.
We'll make a motion to amend the agenda to include the resolution. It's, it's in principle, what's on here, it's the same as, I mean, it's...
Okay.
To allow the ordinance.
Okay.
So, second.
Okay. Any other questions on the resolution, we're doing it first, right?
We're just adding it to the agenda just to add to the...
Oh, add it to the agenda, okay.
What was that number, the resolution number?
Twenty nineteen dash seven.
What's the timeline?
Investment poli- policy city of Greensburg.
Basically, that's, uh, that, uh, any investment of public funds has to come before councils, is that correct?
That's in the...
Or is that in the amendment, or the...
Council.
Ordinance, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
So what, one of the things we asked for Darren, and that was what some of the emails went back and forth recently, were, we asked for an amendment to the ordinance to, if we're going to do long-term investments, you know, two years to five years investments, which is one, what this ordinance has to be in place to do per Indiana code for an invest, long-term. We asked that they just add a clause and then they bring that amount to the council before investing. A lot of times, I think, what we're told basically is, they only have a day or two, basically, once they ask for the quotes, to make the decision on the quotes. So it's not like we can sit here and once they've got the quotes, then have a meeting, talk about it, and get it approved in time. But, but if we're thinking about investing, then that, at least that amount of funds could come back in front of us, and we can approve that before they go out and see the quotes.
And that is actually in the last paragraph of the resolution, that says, the investment officer shall request approval of a mail invested at city council meetings. It's under number two and not last.
Is that, I don't know much about it, is that pretty typical, how cities arrange these affairs?
To get the approval at a meeting, no, I wouldn't say it's typical, but it's not a problem to add to this, uh, as long as, like, uh, uh, as, as you mentioned, the timing is kind of a concern. But as long as it's, it's an upfront, yes, go ahead and invest, say, three million dollars, then, uh, that's kind of gives us the, to go, that money into the account and then invest, and in time to manage with the bids. But if it's kind of an initial okay, then that should work out just fine.
And so we're setting up the account Huntington. So, just trying to stay how, we say we have a made dollar, we can invest, we will, we deposited this account in Huntington Bank, is that correct?
I, I guess as far as things, we would seek quotes and try to find the best investment opportunity.
That's correct. The Huntington is a custodian that will hold, it's, it's actually through their trust department. So, uh, nine dollars would be sitting in a, uh, Huntington trust account. Then we would seek bids from all the local banks, a number of other competitive banks around the state, as well as the US treasuries, credit agencies. Then investments can settle in that Huntington account, they, they're basically just holding.
Okay.
So we're ready to go with the resolution.
We got, we got a motion and a second to add the resolution to the agenda, so we should go on that first, right?
Okay. All in favor, is that?
Aye.
I opposed. Okay. So that'd be, uh, to the, okay, so, do we need to do the resolution first? Okay. Uh, resolution of twenty nineteen dash seven, investment policy, uh, for city of Greensburg. Motion?
Certainly.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor on the resolution, say aye. Opposed? Okay. And the second and final reading ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen, investment of public funds.
I'll make a motion that we pass it as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, Brian Robbins. Okay, I, I have a question, I went here last month, so I'm trying to figure out, did you guys talk about Sun's property?
We did not, so, uh, that one's not on here.
No.
The big motion to amend the agenda to add Sun properties, let's say, resolution two thousand fifteen dash five.
Five, five. And for the record, this is a renewal, this is not a break.
It's not a renewal, it's a... So, and I'll, so what happened was, there was some issues on phasing in different portions of that resolution, so we, uh, the tax abatement committee actually asked to put that one on hold for a little bit till we got some clarity on it. Uh, and so what we're going to do, just to make things clear moving forward, uh, this year, we're going to go and, kind of go ahead and approve it as, recommending that we approve it as is on the renewal. And then next year, what we'll have to do is split it out into four different abatements. If you go back and look, it was, I may have the number wrong, there's like twenty different properties. And so they got phased in in different years when they started, and so it's confusing when you look at the abatement, which one's got, you know, ninety percent, which one's at seventy percent, which one's at sixty percent. So it's, instead of making it so confusing and having different ones phased in at different times, we're going to split it into four different abatements, so then everything on each abatement will be phased at the same level. And so there'll be a two thousand fifteen dash five A, a B, a C, and a D. That's the plan going forward.
Who's Sun properties?
Uh, Whitaker.
So what properties are they?
They're, uh...
Housing number.
Yeah, they're housing additions, there's like twenty different, um...
Different lots and houses?
Yeah, I, I don't have it with me tonight, I'm sorry. It was, um, I can get, I'll get it to you, I'll get you a copy of it, but it's, it's several different, you got it with you, by, uh... Sunset Acres and, um, and there are several houses.
Okay, so... I mean, a motion to amend the Sun properties to the re- uh, resolution, or twenty dat- fifteen dash five.
I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda to add, uh, the renewal for Sunset, or for Sun properties, resolution two thousand fifteen dash five to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, any questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Okay. Now, we're on track. Right, Brian? We're looking at resolution twenty nineteen dash nine, you...
Well, we want to approve to...
Twenty nine, that's renewal.
Okay, sorry. Got in a hurry.
That's all right.
The, uh, need a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, any questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, fast.
Okay, now, we received, uh, three SB one applications, does everybody have a copy of the SB ones? Uh, the first one we'll talk about is two thousand nineteen dash nine, is from A and NJ Hospitality LLC. Uh, we do have the contact person here for any questions on the project, but essentially what it is, is a hotel, it's going to be a fair building, and suites, to be built on the north side of the, uh, Veterans Way. On the north side, actually, of that block of water there on, of Veterans Way. And, uh, total investments, uh, uh, at the completion of the process, uh, the net estimated values upon completion of the process, uh, project is, uh, twelve point five million. And, um, they are requesting a ten-year real property tax abatement. Uh, the committee met on this, um, in early July, I believe. And, uh, uh, well, I don't know if Jamie and, and Maya want to talk about, I think the committee suggested a seven-year abatement.
Oh, no, and this one we...
Oh, this one is ten, excuse me, excuse me, uh, this one was ten, no doubt, I'm sorry.
So, just, just...
In my heart attack, I can't remember. Tiff, we, we also got it approved by Tiff because it isn't a Tiff district, right? So, uh, this was a recommendation for a ten-year abatement. Uh, I can speak on behalf of the EDC that is, uh, kind of development that we'd like to see out in, in Veterans Way. And we appreciate the, with the development and, uh, developer, and, uh, we look forward to, uh, uh, working with the developer on possible other, uh, buildings in that, in that vicinity.
So just a couple of things, the tax abatement committee's, uh, been working on, well, I'd say we've been working on, Brian's been doing ninety to the late, ninety-nine percent like we're, just to be fair. Uh, putting together a tax abatement criteria to try to help standardize abatements on number of years and things like that. Um, and he's taken a lot of stuff from other communities, brought it together, um, so making sure I give Brian all the credit.
Yes.
Make sure, I guess he's put a lot of work into it. Uh, but, we're, we're hopefully going to have a draft to come to the council soon, uh, that we would take a look at it. So one of the things, if we go back and we look at, uh, the abatements that we're going to look at tonight, I think, uh, this abatement came out to, if you just look at the standard points in there, it came out to like an eight-year abatement, I think is what it was, on the, the point system. And then there were additional points it could have scored, um, if you look at that, it's going to be in a targeted area, is it a targeted type of business? So there were a few other areas where we probably could have given points and probably pushed it into a nine-year, um, based on the criteria. Not saying that's the criteria that we, uh, maybe we end up with, we may make some adjustments or changes to it. But I think, the, the reason I'm making that comment is, is I think ten years probably from that is not a far stretch. Um, I think, the concern is, if we come back and, let's say it's, you know, six months from now, we pass that, and we say, here's our, here's what our guideline is, and now we, we've got something very similar, and we want to give them, you know, I mean, we at least, we don't want to be too far off from that, I don't think. In this case, ten years for this kind of investment. The tax abatement was recommended.
Again, the object of the guideline to, to kind of take the subjectivity out of, out of some of these abatements. And again, this is in no way complete, uh, when we initially scored them, it was, it was using the criteria that, uh, actually I took from Jasper. Uh, as Jamie says, there were going to be some little in the round with it, and, and add, uh, more to fit what we would like to see in Greensburg, so we have this marker of what we want. So that's just kind of a preliminary, um, assessment, more or less, so.
I, you know, I think a, a table like that or guidelines, it is a good thing, but I also like what you're saying, that we have room to make some exceptions or make some, uh, changes. And, and I know especially in this area, we've been trying for several years to...
Yeah.
Upstart, uh, development. So what we give now may be a little bit higher than what we will in the future, but, you know, I believe this, um, improvement, this development is very, very important to the development of Greensburg.
Yeah, the idea would be that these developments out here kind of ignite further developments now.
Exactly.
The, the, the spark.
So, I'm, I'm total support of the ten-year.
Good. Any other discussion?
Move to a free resolution like twenty nineteen nine.
Second.
For a ten-year payment.
Second.
Any other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Jeff. Um, again, now, resolution twenty nineteen dash ten.
Twenty nineteen dash ten is from, uh, is a SB one application from Whitaker Oil LLC. Uh, and we have the contact person, Jeff Whitaker, here. Uh, what it is, is a, uh, travel plaza, uh, located across the, uh, Michigan, uh, Michelle Station there, it's taking, I believe, four acres, about, four acres right across there. Uh, to put in a, a multi-purpose travel plaza with a C store and a, um, sorry, restaurant. Total investment, uh, or to, estimated values upon completion of the project would be two point five million, a little over two point five million. Uh, and they are requesting a ten-year real property tax abatement. The committee met and suggested on this one, uh, a seven-year later. Jamie, everybody, if you want to talk.
This one, I know this one and the next one are both going to be very similar, and I think when we ran the numbers, we came up to five, incorrect if I'm wrong, that Brian, those were like, so if, if we use the standard that we have, if we're using what we were suggesting right now, we're working on, we're coming up to a five-year abatement on that. We, we suggested, as a tax abatement committee, a seven-year abatement.
And again, if anybody has any questions on the layout for facility itself, uh, Jeff, I'm sure you're willing to answer questions, or if I'm ready, does not.
Jeff, could you kind of give us a, an overview of, of everything that's going to entail?
There's, uh, the building itself is actually, uh, a little larger now than when we... It's probably, the value is probably a little higher. Uh, it's up to eleven thousand feet now, the, the building, you know, the stores. The Sonic requires three thousand feet, and then we, we're also adding some, some of the car hop stalls, the six stalls, which weren't in the original plans to do, but we talked to Sonic again this last week, and, uh, they were here, and we kind of, back and forth on it. We don't want to build one that has only car hogs because the owner should kind of do that, that part of it, the whole order is indoor seating. Uh, but this, you know, for, uh, kind of the nostalgia of it, I guess, we're going to put some, some lanes in for that. So, the store itself requires more space, and then the convenience store is, uh, the whole rated thousand feet, uh, in its size now, which was, it looks more beautiful. So, uh, and as far as the, uh, uh, architecture or the structure of the building, I shared with these guys before, and there was a sign down out there, if you, let's see, what's, what it looks like, you can, you can see that, the, uh, with the additional lanes for our view, travel and, uh, local tra- trailer service, you know, that's, uh, to make them get in and get fuel, that's the, the idea behind it. Uh, the additional, which I had talked to Brian about, uh, I had applied for a ten, the, uh, the, uh, additional roadway that we have to construct from US four twenty-one to Vandelia, uh, is approximately four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand, to cut the cost there. The road going around the lake, which this is, uh, that goes outside of the investment, up for the buildings, uh, the one on the, uh, lake is about seven to a thousand, to build the road around the lake for the hotel. Uh, so we have full over another million in investments, and just roadways to, uh, to make these things happen. But overall, bucks of the, uh, acreage, it's about four and a half acres of land, due to direct area at that point. Pretty much, it's all, you know, and between the detention and the lanes for the east and the rest of it.
Thought I had referred earlier, uh, that there would be another eating establishment in that, is that, uh, has those plans changed?
Yeah, we did, uh, the, as I spoke with Sonic when they were here, we talked about the, doing a co-op with another, like a sub, charter company. Uh, and I actually called a couple of different ones to inquire about it, and really just decided that the, uh, the additional investment for that, which is not a great deal, but it still adds up in building space, you know, that, uh, where the biggest investment was, making the building bigger and bigger to accommodate, you know. Uh, decided that the return wasn't there for that, yes. We decided just to, just to do the Sonic, and then there'll be other food gardens at the store as well. And indoor seating for whether you're getting something eaten from there or from the Sonic.
Does this, uh, does this also have overnight truck parking, or is this just restricted? Can you show me on this map where your bill drove out? Thanks, Jeff.
What's the original size of, of the building?
Eight thousand feet.
What's, what's one of the estimates? What's it going to be now?
Eleven thousand.
Now, the road is just laying in, I didn't, yeah, I'm sure. The originals, the middle? Right, that's not, that's just, uh, Brian told me it's, they're still investments. It's going to be, you know, which is not how much that is, how much that is. So, no, it's not, it's plus out. Jamie, well, this went through, uh, the abatement committee, how's, you know, you talk about the scoring system, how's the score out? What would, would the score now change much with that in three thousand square feet?
Uh, the three thousand square feet, it would add, add something, quantify that into the investment, the added investment, yes, it would probably change, I don't know how much I can do, but I can capture the equal with the investment in the road, and any additions to it, we'll, uh, we have to re, re-assess that. And again, uh, you know, that, that score sheet, we have broken down as to how much, how many points we're going to do, but the investment, we were just doing it on base on, like Jasper, just for, for Jeff.
We kind of went through the abatement process, kind of lined out where we thought it was going to be, and then after that was over, we, we asked Brian to go back through the tool and say, all right, if we were going to score it, where would it score? Just to kind of test, hey, what, what we're thinking versus where that tool, where it's at right now, where would we line up, right? And then that might help, gives an idea of where we need to either tweak the tool, or maybe we need to tweak our calibration a little bit, right? Those kind of things. So we didn't actually use that tool to determine the seven years, we were looking at it, we thought, this is where it would be, based on, based on the investment that was on here, right? That's what we were basing it on.
This is a little bit off, well, it's not off topic, it's just a little bit down a rabbit hole, it had anything to do with Jeff. But, are we eventually going to need to put a stoplight right there? Has anybody given thought to that?
That'll end up having a council in town, won't it? It'd be, it's a state road, it's a council in town.
Well, in my opinion, I traveled that road several times a day, I, I would say, yes, it's...
I mean, I just looked at where it's going to be.
I mean, I just looking at where it's gonna be, just trying to think, hey, that's the, that's the road to go and go to the hotel. That's the, and the main entrance into the Veterans Way area. And then on the other side, into the travel plaza. Through the truck traffic, you can see that. Eventually needing some kind of control. I know it's neither here or here, I mean, here nor there.
We hope there's enough traffic out there.
I mean, lots and lots of people said they needed traffic light out by on it. Well, a traffic analysis was taken, but they, they said that it wasn't needed. The increased business coming in, they're gonna have to do another traffic analysis and they're, this will probably, um, get us that light that we need out there.
I didn't mean to go.
We talk there every day, I always should go right out.
I think it's relevant here and I think, I think it's relevant because, you know, I, we've all talked about this for several years. Michigan Road being a big city. And, uh, I think this is the tip of the iceberg. So, yeah, I, I agree with Lyetta, we're gonna see increased traffic there.
The, the next abatement we're gonna talk about, just not the cadet, but is gonna be in a similar, in the similar area, right? So, just.
Seven years, was that what you recommended?
That was your recommendation, the taxpayer committee.
While you're up here, you want to talk about the other one? Oh, that's not it. Mayor, I don't know what you drank tonight, but I drank the same thing.
It's a cat's mouth.
I'll make one.
Work quick, go ahead, Ken.
That's what I'm asking. You got, uh, the applications turned in for a certain investment amount, requesting X. You guys looking at this certain investment amount, recommending seven. Now the investments is apparently changing significantly. Do we wanna have it resubmitted, or the way the investment's actually one of these, we're actually making a decision on the true investment?
If, if I were the one submitting the tax abatement, I would because I want to take advantage of everybody I can.
It may not change anything, but at least it would be a decision based on the actual investment.
So, what are you looking about the actual investment being, Jeff?
Uh, it's probably, well, counting the roads, it's a closer.
Four million?
With the roads.
But the road's not available?
No.
Because the difference between the, a five-year and a ten-year, two and a half million is about, around 5,000.
Go with, so it's less than seven. But this is seven years, so it's on the best.
Seven years, I think it was around 2.5 million investment was gonna be, he was gonna get more than 10% back. Basically what was gonna save it over, over a seven-year abatement, it ended up being about 10% of the investment. Obviously, if you're gonna invest more, then part of that's not gonna be available, but it still is.
It's still an investment.
That's, yeah, absolutely.
Well, but if, we don't, there's no choice.
Exactly, exactly.
Can we? Can we make a, I'm just asking this maybe more. Can we make a motion to approve it based on an amended version? Of an expected amount of like 4 million dollars? Or we just make a motion on what we think it would be and then just have it resubmitted to paperwork? Or do we need to go back and have it all resubmitted before?
You guys can do what you want, but the recommendation, the recommendation for the tax, for the tax base amendment. You can just still make the decision on what has been presented and what's been presented to you today.
Resolution number wouldn't change, keep the same resolution?
I'd rather, I'd rather be amended.
Does that delay your project or?
Does it? I, I didn't hear.
Well, I mean, am I, okay, so, you cannot start if I don't have your approval. As I've always been told, you can't do it, telling you, and I touch you.
That's why I was, that's why I was asking the question, I didn't know what you planned.
What you answered, yeah, then that delays it.
Well, I didn't know when you're, I didn't know you're when you're anticipating starting, that's what I was asking, the question, yes, so.
No, I mean, I mean, you know, on the other side, I mean, the amendment's because it changed, it's not our fault, it's changed, neither, so. That's nice, but, but I think it's good to have it right up front.
You could make it conditional.
That's what I was getting, that's the question I was trying to ask Chris, if we made it conditional among these amendments, right? And then we could resubmit that amendment.
What I just told you?
Right.
Yep, I got it, I understand that.
I think that makes it more clear to you, yeah, I think.
But does the increase in investment change the term?
That would, yeah, I think it definitely would. We were recommended seven, it, at 2.5, now we're at four.
Yeah, I just made a 10, forget about it. Let's go.
Why don't we?
Since he's going, you know, since, you know, you showed the project and the regulations.
To those of 19-10?
19-10, that's, I think, like, second.
As, yeah, we want to include it in there, as amended.
As amended with 4,000.
Then if you could just resubmit it.
Okay, actually, you're done with your.
Nope.
Okay, we got a, a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay, the next one is an SB one application for the pavement, uh, it's 2019-11. It's from, uh, Sin Mackey LLC. And that is for a, uh, investment of two point, a little over 2.6 million. It's going to be a, uh, C store, uh, gas station, two restaurants with drive-through, potentially one restaurant depending. But this is gonna be located in front of the Hampton Inn, uh, in that lot there. We do have the person, uh, contact, we can come in here for any questions. And, uh, again, they are requesting, uh, what they would, to the committee. So, uh, Keegan, I think you want to come up here and answer some questions?
Does anybody have a copy of the building design, location?
So, which, which lot is it?
It's the one directly in front of the Hampton on the right-hand side.
Would the abatement committee look at this, would it be very similar to the last one we looked at? The investment would be very similar to the last one we looked at, so we basically, that, our, our recommendation was a seven-year abatement, but just based on, on that. And that's why we, I don't know if anything's changed on this, but that was why, uh, so they were both, that's, we recommended them both at seven years, but that's why.
So this one's based on two restaurants, but he said maybe one. How does that change?
No, there, there's two drive-throughs that are slated for that property. Uh, the second restaurant on the right-hand side will actually be parked inside the C store. Uh, it will be divided off as it is in that picture to make the C store a little larger.
Now, are these confirmed? Are these, are these?
Those are not confirmed tenants, no, no. Yes, yes. Uh, we do have options, though, on those, I just don't want to disclose.
I assume you would have options on those.
Yeah, right.
You got to be aware of where they, you know where he's talking about.
Yeah, there will be, uh, my understanding, when we talked, that there will be a frontage road.
Yes.
Because you won't be able to come off, so the road will be in front.
And it will.
Hook into the other two property.
We've also purchased already the red brick. Uh, so, my contention is, is that this will have a, a commercial road that's gonna run parallel 421. Uh, you've got the entrance to the red brick that's kind of on that blind curve. Uh, when we spoke with Endot about that, we spoke with Brian, he said, you're probably not gonna get a right turn out of that property. Then you're gonna have to figure something else out, so it just made sense to combine all of this as a larger project, but do it in individual parcels.
But the road wasn't figured into the project, right?
Yeah, my road is.
Your 2 million is?
2.6, yeah.
Are you going to share what the restaurant is?
I've got, I've got three or four that we're working with. Um, I, I would, don't want to tell you one and then have it be something different. Um, I was, my, the goal is to find another operator to come in and run it, uh, which I've got a lot of interest. We've got a very strong, uh, site study for gas. Uh, it was shared with the, uh, with the board. Uh, I think we're looking at around a, a little over 100,000 gallons of gasoline. Uh, the C store slated at somewhere around 99 to 100,000 dollars a month. Uh, so we're talking a lot of volume. You have to report like that and hand it to a franchisee, and really, it, it opens their eyes. Uh, and even like our Endot numbers out there on the street are low on that road. I mean, I, I know what you guys see and Brian and I talked about it when we first started looking at some of the numbers and the appraisals and things like that. Um, there's, the, this area, and like you said, is the gateway to Greensburg, there's a lot of potential. There's a lot of commerce that just passes by because there's nothing out there. Uh, the Hampton is begging for, for development and things to happen. Uh, you know, when, when we first purchased that, we met with them, Brian and I went and talked and we met with them and they gave us some ideas of what they wanted and what, what we wanted to do there. Um, but it just keeps coming back to, there's no commerce going on out there. So, the gas stations are probably your first step to start getting restaurants and driving some serious growth in that area.
So we were gonna do a seven-year on the last one because it was two and a half million. This one, two, two and a half, 2.6 million. So I would approve for seven years.
Go ahead and say what you're saying, what you say where you're making.
No, I want to give him the 10.
Well, there's no second, it'll just die. Do we have a second? Okay. Need, uh, need a motion?
Make a motion to approve, resolution 2019.
11.
11. For 10 years that they're asking.
Second, please.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else?
It's, uh, appreciate everybody's participation and everything. Wait until the next meeting, come back with, uh, sort of draft scoring, uh, before moving forward from here. Thanks.
Okay, next opponent, it is, uh, first reading ordinance, 2019-18, additional appropriation, uh, monies for the building, demo unsafe building fund. In that fund, we have 107,000 dollars and we only bused it for life?
500, that's what I was told. I didn't even know that this account, uh, was available. Um, it used to be a reoccurring fund and, um, I've had a few things to board up this year. I've had a garage to demo, so we have depleted the 500 dollars that was in that account. So this is the, um, reason for asking for 20,000 dollars to be put in to the unsafe building account.
Who to approve this? Okay. Second? All in favor, say aye. Well, and that's what we talked about.
That's what we talked about too.
Did you ever talk about that? You know, we got the money and, uh, we spent 50,000.
Yeah, I did not know that existed still.
Yeah, we talked about that already, that's another one. We got your three items, so we need to go with. Okay, the next one we have is, uh, building permit, uh, first reading, 2019-23, building permit, conflict of interest.
Uh, it was brought to my attention that the General Assembly have passed, um, a law indicating that building officials are not allowed to issue permits to family members or friends, et cetera, or if there's a conflict where you're a part of that. So, um, we've always had a agreement in the office that if there was a conflict, that Tracy or whoever would issue the permit vice versa. So now with the law being into fact, that's what we're doing, we're just trying to make it, um, into our ordinance as well with, um, kind of that section of the building ordinance just adding to it a little bit, saying that we recognize that there could be a conflict at times. Um, I do know, you know, my husband comes in for permits, so, you know, Tracy would issue that permit instead of me, so.
Does the statute require us to adopt the?
Yes, the statute does.
Okay, so I need a motion, uh, 2019-23, you have a, uh, conflict of interest.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules on ordinance 2019-22, 23 for the second reading.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Now, do we have to vote on it?
So I make a motion, we pass 2019-23 ordinance on the second reading.
Second. Okay, uh, any questions? All in favor, say aye. Okay, so passed, first of the second reading. Okay. Um, Chief Bridges, first reading on 2019-19, additional appropriation for IT, uh, person.
So? You?
So, so I think you guys discussed this last month?
Uh, yes, it was briefly discussed, we did, by, or since two council members were out and yourself, we decided to table it until, uh, this meeting. And that, plus I think some of the council received, uh, the agenda, but some did not, so we just wanted to make sure. Like I said, we knew the, the process was still only taking some time, so it was not gonna hurt, hook them up one month, so.
I just make sure.
Yeah, not a problem. Uh, so you should have in front of you the IT information. Uh, part of that is funding for, uh, the rest of 2019 if this is passed. And, uh, I believe that's around 27,000 dollars. Again, uh, I believe that will be taken from public safety fund, if approved. Uh, if that, uh, is approved tonight, then we will probably be coming back in front of the board of works in September to show them the, uh, job responsibilities and that of the position. Also, we'll probably, I'm guessing, begin taking applications and start that. Also, we'll probably, I'm guessing, begin taking applications and start that process so we can get this moving before the end of the year is complete. So that's what you have in front of you now. I do know that the sheriff and Erica Free with DeCater County Communications went in front of the county and it was passed by them. So they are waiting on us to start our movements now, so.
Any questions? So could I have a motion to go ahead and fill in this?
Have anybody in that slated or anybody looking at that position?
Uh, I can tell you that we do not have anybody specifically planned out. I have been given at least four or five names that people are interested in, and I would be shocked with what the pay is if we don't receive around ten or more applications. I think it's going to be a, a sought-after job, in my personal opinion.
How was the paid term?
Hi?
How was the paid term?
Uh, it was done through a pay study with other areas, what is, that position is going for in this area. And actually, that number's a little bit lower than what the recommended is. The recommended, I believe, is actually around a hundred and forty-some thousand with that responsibility.
Part of the reason I was asking is this sums for five months, so I'm saying they started always for...